By Indivisible, we will persist. Indivisible is a national organization working for equal rights and equal opportunities for all people. My name is Linda Scroggen. I'm co-founder and co-leader of our Indivisible chapter. This evening, we have four great school board candidates who are running for the two open positions on the Wentzville School Board. According to the Missouri School Board Association, a school board candidate in Missouri must be a U.S. citizen, a resident taxpayer of the district, a resident of Missouri for at least one year, and at least 24 years of age. The length of term is three years. In-person voting is Tuesday, April 6. These are the rules for this event this evening. Each candidate will have 10 minutes total to introduce themselves and answer your questions. Your questions are to be entered in the chat box, and please remember to identify the candidate to whom the question should be addressed if you're entering your question earlier than the time that the candidate, the current candidate is speaking. We will read as many questions as we can to accommodate within the 10-minute slot allotted to the candidate. The candidate can divide up the time for his presentation. Anytime within the 10 minutes, he can speak for five and get answers for six, whatever he feels comfortable with. If there are no questions to, at the end, he can continue with his, speaking about his credentials and background. Our co-leader, Chris Gunther, will time the candidates and read the questions entered into the chat. She'll let you know how much time is remaining, so you know how much time you have for the question. Please keep yourselves muted, everyone, so that everyone can hear the speakers. Our first candidate running for the Wentzville School Board is Donald Looney. Donald Looney was born in St. Louis, Missouri. He and his wife Sabrina settled in Wentzville to raise their family. Don currently works at the General Motors Wentzville Assembly Plant and is a proud and active member of the UAW Local 2250. Don currently serves on the St. Charles Democratic Central Committee as the committee man for the Wentzville Township. Please welcome Donald Looney.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So as she said, I'm Don Looney. I've been in Wentzville since about 1998. Family's great place to live, and I love it. I decided to run for the school board because I've always been an advocate for public education. I feel like it is one of the essential centerpiece's to achieving the type of equality and diversity that we all need in these times. I guess the main thing that I would like to do is bring a little common sense to the school board, and by that, I mean, I just want to make sure that all the voices are heard in our community. You know, when I came here in 98, we were about two stoplights ahead of being a one-stop sign town, and we have blossomed and grown in many ways since then. And our district has kept up with that, and I would just like to see that train going. There were a few years ago where for educators and support staff, seemed like the Wentzville School District and the Rockwood School District were the select places where everyone wanted to work, and that is changing lately. I have a ton of coworkers who work at the plant, who are a few of the teachers who are leaving the industry. So the Wentzville School District isn't just losing teachers, but this is like a phenomenon, you know, nationwide, where teachers are just getting out of the field. And so I feel like they need a little more support, and I want to support them because I've had amazing teachers in my life. Growing up the way I did and where I did, school was often one of the safest places for me to be. And so I would just like to see that carried on. You know, it's benefited for my children, and I would just like to do my part and kind of be there to support the teachers as they give back to our community. Before I start rambling, I guess I'll cut it there and ask if there are any questions that anyone has, and maybe I can speak a little more about what it is I want to bring to the school board that way.
Chris, you're muted.
You're muted. Got it. You have 7 minutes and 21 seconds left for either questions or to ramble on some more. And that's what you said, not my words.
Right, right, right. That is what I said.
No questions, Chris?
There's nothing in the chat.
Wow.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a question, Don.
Okay.
What do you think you were gonna try to get done in your three years? What changes? How are you gonna make the school district stronger and better?
So I guess the best way I can answer that is I think that our school district does a great job of meeting the needs of the students, but I think I would like to change the methodology, the methodology of that. For instance, you know, when we speak about diversity, I think Wentzville is a snapshot of our nation. We have people, well, I know my children attend school at Holt High School, and throughout their career, their education, I'm sorry, I've seen, you know, students coming in from all kinds of socioeconomic and ethnic backgrounds. And so it's become somewhat of a melting pot. And I think that some of the issues that arose from the pandemic and the reopening kind of highlighted that a lot of the needs of all of the students aren't addressed. And so the biggest change I would like to be is a voice for those families who feel like they may be disadvantaged, feel like their needs aren't being met, and just kind of reach out to the community and make sure that I can bring that information back to the board and that it has a chance to be addressed, whether it be publicly or privately or whatever work way works best to make sure that the needs of all of our students are met, no matter what those needs are.
So from Joel, "I would like all candidates to speak on how they plan to ensure fine arts will remain a priority for students as we move forward past COVID, assuming tax revenues will be decreased." And so we'll start with you, Don.
Okay. So you know, finances is a hot-button issue, and it's a sticky subject. And I wish I could wax poetic about some creative way to divide, you know, a dollar and make sure that those dollars are dispersed evenly. I think our hugest opportunity at this point in time, though, and the thing that, that, that kind of I hold close to my heart, being a labor advocate, is that, you know, our teachers just renegotiated their contracts, and they won't be getting raises for a while, you know? And I think that it's a growing sentiment nationwide that our teachers are definitely underpaid for what they do. Just giving a little background for myself, I know that my teachers, for myself, and even my students, have developed a relationship with teachers where they can talk to them about things that they may not feel comfortable talking to parents or pastors about. So in that way, there are certain teachers who become somewhat of a counselor. When you have a parent like myself who is somewhat of a helicopter parent, you know, my students, my children aren't the best students, so it takes a lot of follow-up work for me and mom and communication with the teachers to make sure that they're doing what they should do, what they're supposed to do. So when I'm sending emails seven to eight o'clock at night, a lot of times I'm getting immediate responses from these teachers. And during the last year, I kind of started to feel a little bit of guilt because I realized I was turning that teacher's job into a 24-hour job, especially if they're grading papers or, you know, responding to emails from parents like me, and I'm just one parent. So I thought about how many other parents are doing this. I mean, they have a daunting job. And so I think that if we can take care of the staffing and the support staff, then it makes it easier to meet the needs of those students. And I don't know if there's a creative answer for that, but I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. But we do have to take care of the finances and make sure that we're not blowing the budget or putting us any further into a deficit than we are now.
And there's one more question, Don. How has your background prepared you for service on the school board?
Well,
And you have 3 minutes and 30 seconds left.
Okay. So I'm not a stranger to collective or cooperative thought processes. I tend to feel like I'm diplomatic to a fault, diplomatic to a fault at sometimes. I have the ability to reach across many of the various socioeconomic barriers that they are. A lot of people initially, if you read my bio, they may think that, you know, we have a lot of differences, but when we sit down to have a conversation, I think we find a common ground. And so I think that that ability to bring people together, that ability to have tough conversations in a very respectful manner is helpful. Sabrina, where you have seven people with different thought processes trying to come up with a collective decision that's going to benefit all of the students in our district. And so I don't want to make it sound like I would be some sort of a savior or, you know, a voice of reason, but at the end of the day, it's about results, and we have to make sure that we keep the main thing, the main thing, which is our students. And so I think that through my background, with all the different committees and groups that I've been a part of, I've been able to do that, and I would like to bring some of that energy to the Board of Education.
Okay, in the 1 minute and 57 seconds you have left, there's one more question.
Okay.
And this is going to go to all candidates. "Will you review the virtual access to education and find a better program that would hopefully eliminate some of the issues that we had this past year since we had to scramble so quickly?" And you have 1 minute and 57 seconds left.
Well, I think
Over. Go ahead.
I think that should be a priority at this point in time. But I want to speak to a different portion of that. I don't know if the actual system that we have was, was the issue or if it was the training. I don't know how well, well, especially for my own kids, because they were virtual learning, and it, we had, it was a pretty daunting process to get an understanding of how to get on, what time, and things of this nature. So I think that maybe we need to roll out a little more training and understanding of these processes. Again, a lot of it was a knee-jerk reaction to the times that we're in and what was going on. But I think that we've learned from those mistakes. We've learned from those missteps. And so I think going forward, it would be a lot easier to assess what we need to do. So definitely, I think virtual learning is a huge opportunity for improvement.
You have 1 minute and 1 second left if you want to do any summary.
I think the one thing that I would like to say with this minute is some change is that I'm always available for questions. Reach me, my email, it's at donaldlooney@gmail.com. I answer as often and as fast as I can. And if there's anyone here from the Moms on a Mission group, I apologize for overlooking your email. Your video will be coming really soon, and I apologize for missing your deadline date. Thank you for that.
Okay, 31 seconds left.
I hand that time back over to the moderator.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Don. Our next candidate running for the Wentzville School Board is Cory Sloan. Cory is a wife, mother of four, and former small business owner of 13 years who has learned the value of collaborative communication, research, and adaption in order to find the best outcome and balance to everyday life and choices. She ran in the 2020 election for Wentzville School Board and missed the win by a very narrow margin. Please welcome Cory Sloan.
Hi, everyone. As Linda said, I am Cory Sloan, and I ran in the election last year. It was a very narrow miss, so I'm back at it again this year. My most important job is being a mother of four. I gave up my business this year to stay home with my kids for the, for the virtual option. It just was what worked best for us for this year. My kids, my three oldest, go to Dwell Elementary. That's their home-based school, but they have three amazing teachers that are the base teachers throughout the district. And we see a variety of teachers for their special, special subjects at all kinds of schools. And we have met some incredible teachers we may not have ever met in their career because they're getting to see different schools and different experiences with all of those and great kids. So we've had an incredible experience with the Virtual Academy, and I agree, I hope that that goes, continues on, and we can continue to improve upon the virtual options. I think that's a proactive approach that Wentzville has taken for the future of our students. In this day and age with all of the legislative issues that are coming our way, it will just kind of ensure a great curriculum for many students that is in a comfortable environment for them, hopefully also. My background is I owned a day spa, so my work was not about me. It was about providing compassion and taking that focus off of me. That's what I hope to bring to the board, is just a teamwork mentality, always looking to find a solution, but accepting whenever there are some failures, but working towards fixing those failures. And keeping in mind that it is about the kids and not just the seven up there, the teachers, administration, the kids are inspiration, and they are our future. And last night, I don't know if any of you got to watch the town hall meeting, but those kids are impressive. And if that is any kind of glimpse of our future, we are in, in a good way, for sure. I just want to be here. I last year ran for support of the teachers. Biggest thing, issue was the salaries, making sure our support staff was adequately staffed, supported salary-wise, and all of that, and worked towards those propositions, which passed, which I was thankful for. I will never back down on supporting our teachers. I will never back down on supporting our staff. I will never back down on supporting our students. That they are what makes us a great community. So what I really would love to work on is just re-establishing that teamwork mentality of the board, being able to have constructive conversations, just as like Donna was saying, bridging that gap that is the divide that is in our community right now, and just re-establishing respect, that's a huge deal. If we don't have respect for each other, it's hard for our kids to mimic that. So that's a big deal for me, and I, and I find that as a life lesson that I often show to my kids. We don't know what everybody's walking through. We're not walking in everybody's shoes. We don't know it all, but that's what we're here for, is to understand and have compassion for each other. Let's see, the district provides much more than education. I, Operation Backpack is a big deal to me, supporting our kids and our family needs other than just at school. I believe, just like Don had said, that the school is their home away from home, often they're at school more than they are at home, just because there is so much going on with the outside soccer or basketball or music or any of those kinds of things. So they need to have a sense of acceptance, understanding, and be comfortable at school so that they can continue on and grow in their own future. And if we can keep that in focus, just like our amazing teachers do every day, then I think we, as a board, can make some really great future choices for them. Fine arts, I think fine arts are the a big part of their education. There's so much that comes to keep creating a well-rounded environment, growing our minds in a holistic way, not just a academic way. Especially right now, for me, that is an outlet for my kiddos and their Virtual Academy. Having those special, those specials classes, they get so excited about the different, the different things that the, all of the teachers across the district have come up with for them to do, just being creative. Also, I think that we need to make sure that those teachers are feeling thanked, or, they're feeling thanked and appreciated for the extra work that they have put in this year because they have taken on, besides the kids that they see in school, they have taken on loads of virtual students at the same time. Reviewing the virtual learning obstacles, so I'm trying to make sure I hit all the points that we were asked of. I think a timeline, just having more time to try to spell it out would be, would have been a great thing, but there just wasn't that time. Things look good on paper, but they aren't always work out the way you think they're gonna work out. So just, I think, you know, collaborating with those teachers that have been teaching the Virtual Academy and, and have had to do the hybrid lessons to see what has worked for them and what hasn't worked for them, and just so that they can have that joint conversation to make the choices that work for them, because we're not the ones that are in their shoes. They are. So for me, that's a big part, too, with the board. I would love to see some more, like, kind of like a survey across the different departments. Just that, just by, you know, annually, by annually, just to say, to let us as a board know what's working, what's not, what's not working? What do you need help with? Where would you like to see your students grow in? What can we do to help you? Because that's what the, that is with the support staff, that's with the cafeteria, that's with the bus drivers, that's the counselors also. I want them to be able to come to us and feel comfortable in having those conversations, too, to know that we're here to support them so that they can make a great future for our kids. Any questions?
You have two questions.
Okay.
Do you want both of them at once? You have 2 minutes and 42 seconds left.
Oh, Don, I rambled a lot longer than you did. Okay.
So one is, one question is about the district still growing, and how would you like to see the growth handled? And how do you plan to involve the community in board decisions? And your second question is, "What is one failure of this current school board or recent board, and how would you have steered the board to move in a different direction?" So 2 minutes and 42 seconds left.
Okay, so one failure of the board this year, is that was, was that the question? That was my second.
One failure of the current, current board or recent board, and how would you have handled it differently?
Okay.
Or how would you have steered the board to move in a different direction?
Okay, so that's the big controversial issue this year, it seems to be, and that would have been how COVID was handled. I want my kids in school, absolutely. I think kids need to be in school, absolutely. I would have just loved to have seen some numbers, some clarity as to when different levels would have been laid out. Like, you know, we have this many cases, or we're in the red at this much. Just some clarity, just so it wasn't like a, you got a call the next day saying, or in two weeks that we were going to be doing this. If it was just spelled out, I think that would have been beneficial and less nerve-wracking and less anxiety for the families, students, and the teachers altogether. So, so that's always been my stance on that, keeping it safe for everybody. Just some clarity would have been great for that part. And the other question was growth of the district?
Yeah, our, our district is still growing. How would you like to see growth handled? And how do you plan to involve the community in board decisions?
Okay. Okay, growth of the district, it, well, we moved here for the district knowing that it's growing and we are, our kids are meeting all kinds of people, and I absolutely love that. The growth of the district, we have to kind of take a proactive approach to that and look at what our options are going to be instead of building so many schools. At some point, we are going to bottom out. So we've kind of got to watch our building expenses at the same time while being able to accommodate and being able to adapt and be able to study what other districts comparable in size have possibly done. I think that would be beneficial for that part, watching where the neighborhoods are growing, are going in, where there's land that's building, where, so to pick places where we actually build those next schools if we need to do that. So I think that's important also. Involving the community, the little, creating those smaller committees that are more focused on specifics, whether it's like a building and construction committee where, you know, people can raise some questions and have conversation about that, that's like their expertise, per se, or community involvement service projects that we could do. What will we, what does our community need as a whole, as far as like maybe our service organizations, like whether it's a food pantry, whether it's getting clothes for kids or diapers for kids, families that are in need, something like that? Or maybe even just a group that specializes or knows a lot about finding those grants and those free monies that we can find
Time.
For our students and our teachers. Sorry, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Cory. Our next candidate running for the Wentzville School Board is Sherri Thurman. Sherri Thurman was raised in St. Louis and later moved to the Northwest where she attended the University of Idaho, earning a BS in Special Education and Elementary Education, and then an MS in Special Education with an emphasis in Behavioral and Emotional Health. Upon her return to the Wentzville area, she completed her Administration Certification. Sherri is a proud educator of 47 years and recently retired from the Wentzville School District after 34 years. She has been awarded several honors for her work as an educator. Please welcome Sherri Thurman.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for all of you who are attending. And as I listen, it's like, oh my gosh, there are so many things I want to talk about. I'm very excited about making a decision to run for the school board. After so many years as an educator and recently retired from the school district, I decided I really wanted to continue serving the district's families, their students, and, and our staff, but from a different chair and a different perspective, because it is very different. I'd like to be the educator's voice on the school board. I do believe that a school board should have at least one educator as a member. I also would like to be a positive influence and bring back hope and confidence to the, to the school board. And I want to assure that all of our conversations are student-focused conversations. I'd like to say that I welcome tough conversations on impactful topics. And the topics that I really want to support and expand include the areas of mental health, class sizes, special education caseloads, and staff ratios, and staff ratios go beyond our student-teacher ratios. It's all the staff-student ratios in the district that I think we really need to dig, dig deep and look at. I definitely want to continue expanding alternative learning options as well as our alternative programming. And I also want to really focus on and expand our training that have been started, but, you know, it may be been put a little bit aside, but I want to make sure that we continue training in the areas of a diversity, trauma-informed practices, and a belonging culture. And as well as I want to have trainings for our staff so that our staff really feel prepared to go into their job and feel they can meet their job expectations. I'm well aware that all these discussions will end up with a discussion of finances. And I want to have those discussions, but I want them to be student-focused. I want to always ask, what is the outcome? We, we have to figure out ways to create opportunities of, as we have these discussions and we make decisions and move forward, that we create opportunities to listen to our students. And my gosh, after last night, I want to And my gosh, after last night, I want to do that even more than ever. And um, and listen to our parents and listen to our staff, people that are in the trenches every day. Um, as we make decisions, we just shouldn't impose ideas on people. We should have them be part of our decision-making process as much as possible, of course. Our decisions impact our students' educational services, um, their futures and their social, emotional uh wellbeing. I feel like I could go in to all of my experiences, but I feel like I have extensive uh and unique experiences in many areas that would allow me um to be well-informed about focusing on my, on the areas that I have just mentioned. Um, as we move forward, I, I do believe the board and the district leadership uh needs to find hope and respect and start treating each other with dignity. Um, I think that uh we need to find the calm and share our calm with our community in this time of stress. So should I, I would, I would like to open it up to questions. However, I think there is a question for all of us about uh fine arts. Am I correct?
Yes, there were, there were two questions actually. One was, how will you ensure the fine arts remain a priority even if funding is down? And the second one was, if you would review the virtual access to education and find a better program that will eliminate some of the issues that happened this year? With the virtual learning.
Okay, so.
You have six minutes left.
Okay, thank you, really. Okay. Um, I, I, so I welcome the co, the question about fine arts because uh what I, what I can do, but I won't do is to go into what my other career was. Um, some of the folks know that um I was very much involved in um the uh dance world, the theater world and music world. I mean, I actually had, I could love to talk about it, but I should. Um, I actually had the opportunity to um dance professionally in uh the area of ballet and ballroom. So um, I am actually an absolute proponent of the fine arts. Um, and I know that it, it is, it is beyond just those areas, but uh the, the performing arts, I just think is, are so beneficial. But the, but the other thing, talking uh about a fine arts is that um, as we look at our educational system and so much of it is linear, uh, the fine arts allows us to become much a bigger thinkers. Um, I think way outside of the box, and you can see how excited I get. It uh allows us to integrate both our left and right side of the brain, which I think is critical. The other thing that is so important about fine arts is that um it, it allows um uh students with sensory issues, it, it allows ways to address those issues. The other thing it does is it creates opportunity for mindful activities. Um, and I need to like stop because I could go on and on and on about, about the benefits of um, of movement and music and um. Yes, so to answer the question more directly is, I will do every single thing I can to um, to absolutely maintain uh fine arts because without it, I think that we have just eliminated an entire section of uh child development. So then um, moving on to the conversation about uh virtual learning and the experience that our families and our students and our staff have had this year is like, wow, we had to pivot quickly. Um, like I said last night, um, you know, uh COVID descended on us and we did, you know, we have no drills, like uh, you know, different drills. We have for disasters and, and emergencies. Uh, we just had to figure out what to do and we were getting information very quickly. And information was changing uh rapidly. Sometimes we would have a meeting and, and I was there um during the beginning of it. And um, we would have meetings in the morning and, and called back into meetings in the afternoon because our directions, our directives, our information, our statistics were um, were changing sometimes that quickly. Um, I know that we, we, all the departments had to prepare to address this and our Teaching and Learning Department had to prepare quickly. So it's someone already said, there really wasn't time to become really well-educated on how to do and what to do and technology had to step way up. And so I, I think that a, as we move forward, I, I think there needs to absolutely be a virtual option for learning. I think that we need to expand what those options look like. And I also think before we just decide where to end up, I think we need to have our virtual learning teachers together. I think we need to listen to what their stressors were, uh, what their anx, what their anxiety was about, how they were able to interact and form relationships with their kids. And I need, and, and we need to build our celebrations. So um.
I was gonna say, you had one more question come in. And it says, Sherri, I know you're a big supporter of mental health and the community seemed to be really concerned about the mental health of students who are not in school, but there seemed to be a lack of concern about students' mental health who were in school. What would you like to see happen to make sure all students' mental health is nurtured, including those that may be learning virtually? And you have two minutes and twenty-three seconds left.
That's not enough time. So I have to, so I have to say that, um, so I immediately guessed when I heard that there wasn't concern about the kids that were in school. Um, so I would really have to dig in to find out about that. Um, we don't have enough mental health professionals. Um, I know that's probably not a popular thing for us to, for me to say, because again, it goes back to finances. But we need more clinical staff um in, in our district. And you can look at the trends in other districts, how they've staffed for their, their licensed professionals. Um, I absolutely um want to make sure that, um, first of all, I thought, I, I, I know I've talked to people about how difficult it was to actually connect with our students who were virtual learners. Um, but we have to make sure that we connect with our students, um, no matter where they are in school. Um, I do think, um, I, I'm not trying to sidestep here, but I do think that sometimes it is a um, a, a, a capacity issue. Uh, when you have emergencies happening with children and, and you don't have enough staff to address those emergencies. And by emergencies, I mean children that have plans to um, to actually uh harm themselves and their life. And I think that we can't brush that under the rug, which I don't believe we do, but it's just a delicate subject. So I think that we need to look at um and, and talk to our, our, our mental health staff. Um, we have partner agencies in the community uh that really provide uh amazing services for us. We need to increase those partnerships. And I, I, I think I need to talk to people and I need to understand what is happening and what isn't happening because if we lose just one child, whether it's a child that buries themselves at home or buries themselves. It is too many children. So I, I, that is really a, a, a topic that I will not give up on.
And you have um one more follow-up. In regard to the pandemic, there seemed to be a lack of concern about children who may be anxious returning to school. I think that was clarification of the question about kids being anxious returning to school. And you have thirty seconds left, sorry.
Well, um, so I, you know, I certainly uh want to be careful with um, you know, confidentiality and privacy and all that, but I um, I've had, had the extraordinary privilege of being a home component to a virtual learning young children. And um, one of them are, is anxious about returning to school. And I think that it's going to take connections with teachers, it's going to take working with a parents and how to talk to the child. And, and I think that nothing can be rushed into. It's possible that um, uh, if they go back to school next uh at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Sherri.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I should have scheduled this for five hours.
I gotta tell you, la, last night, when I, I heard that we had sixty seconds and ninety seconds, I'm like, oh. Anyway, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next candidate running for the Wentzville School Board is Brad Buchanan. Brad Buchanan has served on the school board since twenty-eighteen. He is running as the incumbent. Brad has lived in the Wentzville School District since twenty-eleven. He attended the University of Missouri Columbia where he earned a degree in Computer Science. Brad currently works at Mastercard managing the mainframe storage and performance teams. Please welcome Brad Buchanan.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna run through a quick intro and then I want to pick some of these questions as well. If nobody has any specific ones for me, I'm gonna read some of them on the board, maybe there were some of the other candidates, if you don't mind. Um, my name is Brad Buchanan. I served on the board since two thousand eighteen, like I said, so three-year term, so my term is up. Um, when, when, when it came time to decide, I, I did a little soul searching and trying to figure out uh i, if I was gonna run again. Uh, finally, what, what ma, made me throw my hat in the ring was my concern over the, the actual makeup of the board itself. I want to make sure we have board members that understand governance and, and how a school board and governs a district, you know, looking in. But I also want to make sure that we have board members that will support this district externally. And, and, and that's support. And, and, and we've all talked about that and we, I, I want all children to be supported regardless of race, social, socioeconomic status, anything, all children to be supported, all staff, whether they're support staff or teachers or everyone. But I want that support also to extend into administration, uh cabinet and the superintendent. We have to protect, we have to support and, and protect the district as a whole. We can't pick apart one part or another and expect it to still be functional and still work as a unit for our community. That the school provides, as, as, as everybody else has mentioned, so many services for our community. We, we can't pick it apart uh into little pieces and still expect it to function like our community needs it to. That's, I'm, I'm really concerned about that. And that's one thing that I, I've been pushing. I, I'm gonna start picking through some of the questions if, if nobody minds. Um, the, 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 the fine arts question. I'm also, I, I, I wasn't an athlete. I did musical theater and I was in choir and I did those kind of things. So I, I, I always want those to be a, to be a part of our curriculum. One thing that I, I did like, it was a positive movement. It was a couple of years ago when I helping with some of the, they were calling them STEM nights at, at the school where they, you know, hit the science, technology, you know, engineering and math, but they started adding in the A and, and made it steam and kind of changed that up a little bit. And I really liked that. It, it was a little more broader view of that instead of just only the kids that can do math really well. What about everybody else? How do we get them included? And so I, I really liked that, that, that that view expanded. Trying to flip, flip through everybody's questions and, and unless uh somebody speaks up. The, the virtual, my children are in virtual academy. I have two in the district. I have a sixth grader at Prairie View and I have a freshman at Liberty and we, we, we enrolled in virtual academy. Um, my, my, my wife is at home and then I'm also working from home right now due to COVID. And so we, we were able to support our children and, and do that. My children have, have done extremely well. I've let them manage their own schedule. I, I've let them, you know, given them some more responsibility and, and turned this into a positive for our family. I guarantee they want to get out of the house and they want to get back to their friends, but while we were here trying to make it as positive experience as possible. One thing I, I don't want to do is as we go into next year and, and I want the kids to be back in the school as much as anybody. But I don't want to throw away all, all the things that we've learned. Let's, you know, and, and I, I think one of the other questions is, is about how do we fix it? And I, I think that's the important question. I don't want to give up on it. Let's, let's take the good stuff. Let's fix where the problems are and then let's keep this as a positive for our, for our district. Um, A, AMI or Alternative Method of Instruction Days, maybe our, our snow days are kind of a thing of the past or inclement weather, wha, whatever we might use it for. If there's a, a water main break at one of the schools, we, we, we don't have to miss out a day of school. We just call it an AMI day. Everybody stays home and then, and then we continue that learning process and we don't lose those learning days. So that's, I, I, I really appreciate the way that question was worded and I've lost it in here, so I apologize. I don't have the name, but yeah, let's not, let's not throw it away and just go back to, you know, our, our, our physical classrooms and then forget everything we've learned. Let's use that and make that a strength of the district. Um, sorry, flipping through here. The growth issue, thi, this is always brought up a couple of times today. It's never brought up to me, so I'm gonna jump on this one a little bit. Um, the growth issue, I think, is kind of a, a, a sticky subject for the Wentzville School District right now. And one of the problems is we can't just point it, you know, and, and I know people have said things like, well, I have a relationship with the leaders of Wentzville. Well, that's good, but our district makes up multiple municipalities. We have Unincorporated, we have Dirty Prairie, we have Old Fallon, Lake St. Louis. I feel like I'm forgetting, but anyway, um, it's not just one, one place to go to have that discussion. We have to have that discussion five different times, however many I just counted there. I've already forgotten. And so that's your, you, you have com, competing goals there. I mean, the city wants, wants to sell homes, that's tax. Oh, um, that's tax revenue, just like it is for the district. So there's a, there's a lot of competing goals there. So I don't think we're gonna fight the growth. We just have to find a way to live with it and, and help smooth out the edges. And some of that's with our, our long-term planning and our census numbers and those kind of things and help us plan a little better. But the, the growth, I, I don't see the growth going away and, and we're not gonna do much to change it. We just have to find a way to maybe help, help ourselves live with it a little bit. Um.
Brad, there's a question specifically for you. What do you feel has been your greatest contribution to the board these last few years?
What I think is my strongest contribution, the, the other board members might not, uh, might not agree. Uh, I've been kind of a broken record about a couple of things. Is trying to bring all of our, all of our board actions, our board decisions and bring it back to policy. Um, board, boards govern through policy. This isn't just a group of, of, of seven people that come up with, with random ideas and we vote on it and go. Um, the board's governed through policy. That adds, and I'm, I'm gonna use one of the buzzwords that's been in the election. That adds some transparency to all of our decisions. If we, if we're always following the same process, let's say our, our, our bid process, the closed bids, we open them on a certain day, then we, you know, we, we do this communication path and we always follow the same steps. That adds clarity for anybody that's dealing with the district and adds a sense of comfort that we're doing the right thing. There's nothing shady going on because we're following that same process. So that's one of the things that, that I, I've tried to do is when we, when, when we have our conversations, my, my, my two questions are where is it in policy or how do we bring it back to policy? And then how do we, how do we bring this focus back to kids? And some, some of our discussions, I'll be blatantly honest, have nothing to do with education, nothing to do with kids. We get kind of bogged down in, in details that I really don't think we should. And so that's, um, I know that's not a, 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 a big, you know, maybe not a great accomplishment, that it doesn't sound that great, but that's really what this board needs to do is focus, put its focus in the right spot.
And you have one more question besides the pandemic. What have the major challenges the board has faced while you have been on the board?
Uh, my second biggest challenge was, I'm, was it the end of eighteen? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. I think it was the end of eighteen. I've forgotten the date when we did our first round of major rebounding for the schools. Um, and that was, uh, it, at the time, I'll be honest, at the time, I thought that was the most contentious parent meetings I'd ever been in. We had uh community, community meetings at Frontier. Frontier, I think there was one at Boone Trail. We, we moved them around trying to communicate out a rebounding process. We had news reporters showing up at meetings because of how contentious they got. A, a, at the time, I thought that was the, the, the worst thing I've ever seen. Um, COVID came along and I, I'd set some of those meetings as my screensaver right now. If I had to, to, to make some of this go away, I didn't realize that it was, it was, it would get worse. But I think that was the, probably the, 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 besides the pandemic, that was the, the major challenge we had to work through. I'm proud of how we did work through it. Like I said, we had all, we had community meetings, we put together workshops, you know, there was a, a road show where we went around and had maps and we showed how parents were impacted. And I'd go to track uh cross-country meets and parents would pull me over in the parking lot and, and we'd have, we'd have a discussion and they'd ask about their kids. We had websites where they could look up, you know, which school their kid would go to. And I, I, I think that's our pandemic caused us to have to kind of shut down and, and, you know, we couldn't go out and speak the but that's what I think I want to get back to is next time we do have something major, let's go back and do it that way. Where we were taking it on the road and we're communicating, the pandemic caused us to kind of shut down because of, you know, social distancing, so we couldn't do that. I, that's what I want to get back to, a, as we get back to communicating with the community the way we used to.
So you have a minute and twenty-eight seconds left. Do you want to summarize or hit another? Um, I think that you've answered the questions that have been posed to you.
Well, here, I'll spend a minute and, and, and I'll say it for, for all the candidates here. Thank you very much for having us today. Um, I know we, we, we all have Facebook pages and websites and emails and I, I'll type my email into here. If you have any further questions, I guarantee any, everybody on here will, will accept a question. As a computer science person, how do you, your science program in the district? Um, the one thing that has helped uh the, our, our push for computer science and then yell at me if I get into my time, because now this is the one I'm excited. Um, the one thing that I have, um, I, I, I've been proud of is, is at least our one-to-one, one-to-one initiative. Um, going back years past, it had one computer room with twenty computers for the whole class or the whole school. Um, the one-to-one initiative at the middle, at high school was years ago, we pushed that in, into the middle schools and then we're pushing that down into the elementars. That's helped. The, the only way you can have a, a real computer science program is actually have that technology in students' hands. Um, that i, i, it's not a, a, a high-level discussion you can have. The students have to be on, they have to be using it and they have to do it. Um, so getting that into their hands helped. Um, I personally would like to see us, there's, you know, some, the Raspberry Pi initiative and it's little, little computers for students where they can learn. There's some other things I'd like to see us get involved with, but. There's some other things I'd like to see us get involved with, but regardless of how we do it, getting it into the hands right now, like I said, we're we're starting into the elementary schools. I'd like to see that, that one-to-one initiative continue. And I think that would do, go a long way towards strengthening what we're doing with, with our computer science initiatives.
Four seconds, you did it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brad. Uh, we hope this event helped to get to know better the great candidates running for the Wentzville School Board. And we hope you'll get out to safely vote on April sixth. Before we conclude this event, we would like to give special thanks, Joel, I'm gonna mispronounce your last name here, Joel Lutia?
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Okay. Thank you for arranging the speakers for this event. A Lake St. Louis resident, Joel is currently combining his two passions of business marketing and politics. And we certainly appreciate what you did for us tonight. We got a great insight into these four candidates. And thank you to our candidates and to you, our audience, for attending. Remember, in-person voting is April sixth. Good night and stay safe.